Today is Thursday, October 15th, 2015. It is just about 8:30 a.m. We're in the community center at the Sierra Room at 851 East Williams Street in Carson City. Can we have a roll call, please? Sue?
Good morning. Supervisor Bowden?
Here.
Supervisor Bonkowski?
Here.
Supervisor Bagwell?
Here.
Supervisor Shirk?
Here.
Mayor Kroll?
Here.
We have a question.
Is Nick Emery here to get us? Hi, Nick, come on up. I didn't see you there.
Lord, thank you for this day. Thank you for the reminder that we have that we're blessed when we seek peace. May we throughout this day and throughout the places we lead and influence, seek your peace and promote your peace in all we say and in all we do. May we be known by our peace, we pray, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Susan, go ahead and give us the play, please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, a free, public, always stands, one nation, under God, indivisible,天地无边， just as for all.
Okay, well now move to public comment. We're on item number five. This is the time for any public comment. We have public comment at the beginning and the end of each of our meetings. And we also entertain public comment generally on agenda items as we go through the agenda. Anybody on public comment? Chief, come on up.
All right. For the record, Bob Schrean's Fire Chief and also the emergency manager, so I'm kind of here on that hat today. What I'd like to do is first off, I want to thank you guys for showing up to Fire Ops 101, and I want to know, how sore were you the next day?
Very.
How about you?
Just one knee.
Just one knee? Okay. We just want to say thanks for you guys coming out. It was a great opportunity for a learning process for all of you guys. I don't know if you saw the news footage, though. It was all about Truckee Meadows. Didn't say anything about us, huh? I'm like, really? And you're in our training facility? So anyway, we tried, but it was a great tool and it really helped out on both of us. We really appreciate you guys going. We're also putting together a slideshow that we'll come and present to the board. We can show all the photos that we have and all of you guys and all your stuff. So it was a lot of fun. And the other thing, today is officially the Great Shakeout Day, right? It's earthquake awareness, and today is a great shakeout at 10:15. So hopefully that we don't really have an earthquake today at 10:15, but if there was one, we just want to make sure that everybody knows that to stop, drop, and kind of get under some cover. And it's a pretty big deal. It's going out through nationwide on this day. And also doing our hazard mitigation plan, Carson City in Nevada is one of the higher risk areas for earthquakes. So just be cognizant of that, that if we do get one, to just please make sure that you stop and get some cover and be careful what's going on. So we just wanted to bring that up today. We have some propaganda we'll leave at the back, but thank you very much.
Any questions? Chief, while you're there, let me just give you a compliment. I ran into a citizen here two days ago, as a matter of fact, who had a water leak at their residence, October 1st. It was, you know, it wasn't on city property, didn't know what to do, called Public Works, got ahold of you, Fire folks. They came out, not only stopped the leak, but cleaned it up, cleaned everything up, and walked out of there without a spot on it. And you're to be commended. This lady was extremely pleased with, and you can probably, she'll probably say more to you, but I want you to know that.
All right. Well, great. Thank you. I'll make sure, October 1st, I'll go thank the crew that was out.
Yeah, and there was, somebody had to crawl into the house, got all muddy, one of your new guys.
Right, to fix it. Yeah. Right. Okay.
Came out, but he cleaned up after himself, too.
Okay.
So, good. All right? Thanks. Give us your propaganda there.
All right, thank you. Okay.
Good morning, Supervisors. Mayor.
Actually, she tried to call a plumber and all that. She went through all that, yeah.
Denise Stevens, I'm the interim CEO of Nevada Humane Society. I'm here at the invitation of Supervisor Shirk, and thank you so much for this opportunity. It's truly appreciated. I just want to give you a couple of updates. The first would be the obvious, that we have had a leadership change, and I want to assure that this body, that despite that, the commitment of the Nevada Humane Society remains firm to the people and pets of this community, as well as to this body, obviously. I personally am thrilled to be in this new role temporarily, but it also gives me the opportunity to be a part of the life-saving in Carson City, and I can't tell you how much I appreciate that opportunity. A quick update about the existing shelter. Your wonderful Public Works folks have really made things happen quickly. We expect to have all the dogs back in the kennels next week. So it's, you guys are phenomenal to work with, and thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Well, thank you, Denise. We look forward to working with you.
All right.
All right. Well said.
I'm off to get kittens.
Okay. All right. Any other public comment? Come on up. Dana, come on. Anybody? Okay. Oh, you're bringing propaganda, too? Then we'll move on to item number six, possible approval of the minutes of September 17th.
Yes, I've got propaganda.
Okay. This is a proclamation for Nevada Day. Everybody had a chance, motions in order if you want to make one. The theme this year is Nevada, One State, Many Cultures.
I move to approve the minutes of September 17th, 2015, as presented.
It reads as follows. Whereas Nevada was admitted as the 36th state in the Sisterhood of States on October 31st, Motion and a second on the motion discussion. Hearing not all in favor, signify by saying aye. 1864, by signature of the President of the United States, Abraham Lincoln. Posse nay carried unanimous. Any changes to the agenda? And whereas Admissions Day became a legal holiday in Nevada by legislative action in
No change.
At board? Unless there's an objection, then we will take the agenda as posted. 1891, some 27 years after formal admission, and when a handful of history-minded Nevadans Now let's move to special presentations, and why don't we all move down there, and began the tradition of celebrating Nevada's admissions, said celebrations occurring in I'll read from down there, and we'll all go down there, because we've got a lot going on here today, so. the city of Reno from 1891 through 1937. And whereas Judge Clark J. Gill spearheaded the relocation of the grand birthday party to Carson City in 1938, which was the 74th anniversary of the battle-born state, and this year, 2015, marks Carson City's 77th anniversary of the Nevada Day celebrations here in our very own capital. Whereas this is the culminating year of the 151st anniversary of the state of Nevada, recognized as the official holiday on October 31st and celebrated on October 31st. Now therefore, I, Robert Kroll, Mayor of Carson City, on this 151st anniversary of the great state of Nevada, encourage all residents, friends, visitors, and spectators alike to pause in honor of this momentous event and to join in the spirit of this year's theme, Nevada, One State, Many Cultures. Oh, who wrote that? That's pretty good. Here.
Thank you.
Want to say some, hand out some proclamations.
All right. Thank you so much for doing this today and getting us all excited, because Nevada Day is just around the corner. We brought some Nevada Day pins for you, and this is our poster. We've got lots of fantastic things going on. We've moved the beard contest over to 308 North Curry Street, over at the old Citibank parking lot. So we've got food, music, vendors, we've got rock drilling, everything's going on. And so we invite everyone to please come out and have a good time. Everyone's still trying to get parade entries in at the last minute, but you'll have to deal with Bernie Allen on that. And there's been quite a few, but we've got over 180 entries this year, and it's looking really good. So we invite you to please come out and enjoy Nevada Day.
Well, thank you, Dana. Here.
Thank you very, very much.
And the beard contest is still going on, right?
The beard contest is going to be over at the Citibank building.
Citibank.
So it's going to be up on a stage and with sound, so every, thank you.
So we moved it over to what's called Fam Fest. So we've got food and music right after the parade. The beard contest will be going on, but it'll be up on a stage this year and have sound so that everyone can hear and see. And we have a new beard director, Bob Stransky. So he's going to be doing that. Thank you.
Well, I understand that Supervisor Shirk and Supervisor Bonkowski are going to be there.
All right, they've got some good, they're contenders. There's some good contenders right there.
Thanks, Dana.
Thank you, sir, very much.
All right.
May I get a picture?
You sure can. Let's do it. Come on.
Absolutely. Sorry. All right.
You know, I didn't got, I have, you know what? I have posters for everyone that cares. Thanks, sir.
Next is Kathy Bartosz here. Who do we have from, hey, there you are, back there. Okay. This is a special event, and we want you to talk a little bit more about it when I, after I read the proclamation, Kathy. But this is a proclamation for Remote Area Medical Days. And it reads as follows. Whereas Remote Area Medical, RAM, is a nonprofit volunteer organization that offers free health services, medical, dental, and vision care on a short-term basis throughout the world. And whereas RAM has successfully held hundreds of free clinics providing services to thousands of men, women, and children. And whereas today, 60% of its missions are in the United States for the uninsured and underinsured. And whereas RAM is providing free medical services to the citizens of Carson City at Carson High School from October 16th through October 18th. And whereas, in addition to the immediate care provided during the free clinic, RAM will emphasize health education, prevention, and self-care. And whereas hundreds of medical providers and the general public are volunteering to take part in this event at no cost to the participants. Now therefore, I, Robert Kroll, Mayor of Carson City, do hereby proclaim October 16th through the 18th, 2015, as Remote Area Medical Days in Carson City, and ask all citizens to join in me in recognizing RAM as an international organization providing free medical services, and thanking them for their selfless donation to our community. And if anyone's listening who needs help and service, this is the time to come get it. So it's a wonderful program, and I know you're working pretty hard to do it. So tell us a little bit more about it.
By accepting this proclamation, do I have to do it again next year?
Yes.
Well, we'll discuss that at a later time, but the weekend, this weekend, we have the capacity to serve over 1,000 people with free medical services, free dental, including extractions and fillings and cleanings, and as well as a gigantic vision lab, and people can leave with a new pair of glasses. So we're very excited about being able to offer this service in Carson City to those that need it. As we all know, even those of us who work hard in our jobs oftentimes don't have vision and dental services included in a health plan. So we're hoping to be able to help everybody who's in need and get them served. And I graciously accept this on behalf of the over 600 volunteers that will be there this weekend, and over 12 donors who've made this possible.
Good. Thank you, Kathy, and thanks to everyone else who, I know there are other volunteers in here. And, yep, Angela's back there. Okay. All right. Thank you. Now or later?
We're checking with yours, there.
Sure.
I didn't know it was mine. I did. In June, the mayor went on an honor flight with my husband, and one of the visits and stops that they do is at the Vietnam Wall. And one of their things that they all do there is they leave a memento at the wall. But the Nevada State Daughters of the American Revolution created a book, Reflections From the Vietnam War, that they all signed and left at the wall, because we thought that all of the Vietnam veterans were not welcomed home. And so we wanted to present one to the mayor and welcome him home.
Well, I can't say anymore, man. I'm taken back now. Okay. Wow. Just a moment.
It is, but he deserves it. He does so much for the Nevada.
Okay. All right. Where are my length of service? You've got them. Good. All right. Now, a very pleasant part of the day as well. Our Length of Service Awards. Karen Leit. For 10 years of service at, you know, our business manager. Right. Karen, on behalf of a grateful community, thank you for all that you do for making Carson City a better place to live, work, and play, and look nice. Thank you very much. All right.
Thank you.
Come on up here now. Come on.
Elaine Wherlinger.
Good morning, Elaine. How are you this morning? 25 years? That's wonderful, you know? That's real dedication and a tremendously appreciated dedication to your city. On behalf of a grateful community, please accept our sincere thanks for all that you've done over these past 25 years, and we want 25 more years. Okay.
Thank you.
Come on up here. All right. Sheriff.
We'll kind of do this one together, okay? If we can get Commander Crawford. A little bit of introduction. Commander Crawford is a volunteer here with the sheriff's office, and he runs our Uniform Reserve Organization. This is kind of a 10-year mark for him. He has been running it for 10 years. And this year, we're very, very proud in Carson City to be able to focus in on him a little bit, as well as the rest of our volunteers in this community. Tom Crawford received the Governor's Points of Light Award for Volunteer Manager of the Year, which is a huge, huge honor for us to say thank you to Tom. It was held down in Las Vegas about a week or so ago. Tom has done so many things for Carson City that we really, we just cannot list. He's out there every day with us. He does most of the things that we just can't get to. And Tom is always standing ready up front to accomplish those things. So with that, Mr. Mayor, if you'll...
Do I want to read that?
Well, no. If you'll, if you'll, I got a whole bunch here from, a whole bunch.
Holy smokes, Tom. This is big stuff, man.
This thing's full.
Wow.
We have, we have congratulations from, what do we got?
Deanna Titus.
Deanna Titus.
Amadee.
Mark, Congressman Amadee.
Senator Heller.
Senator Heller.
Preston Hardy. Harry Reid.
And Harry Reid. Tom, we could not thank you much. You were such a great representation of so many of the people here in Carson. As a manager, you were just an impeccable human being, and we cannot thank you enough. So congratulations.
Thanks, sir. Very much appreciated.
Congratulations, Tom. I mean, you hold on, we'll put those right here for a minute. I know you've received this already, but let me just echo on behalf of myself and our board how proud we are and thankful that you're in our community. And the receipt of this award by you and the giving of the award is extremely well-deserved. And I got to tell you, from a personal standpoint, I see you everywhere, everywhere. And I always feel a lot safer when you're around. Okay? So we're going to present this to you. It's the second presentation, but... This time he gets to keep it. You get, you get to keep it. So this is the 2015 Governor's Points of Light Award to Tom Crawford, Volunteer Manager. All right. So, Tom, we want you to come up here, too. You want to say a few words? Come on.
Sure. I appreciate this very much. It's quite an honor to be recognized by the state, by the community, and certainly by the sheriff's office and the Board of Supervisors. If I didn't like Carson City, I wouldn't still be here. Fortunately, I was given the opportunity, when I worked for the feds, to move here and love the place and would do anything I possibly can to make it better, which I think we have as reserves. So again, thank you very much.
All right. Come on up here. We're going to get you. All right. Good. All right. Come on up here, Sheriff. We want to get you in a picture here, too.
Hey, one, two, three.
Thank you, sir. All right. Let's take up, we'll recess temporarily as the Board of Supervisors and reconvene as a liquor and entertainment board, and let the record reflect that the entire board is here, including the sheriff. We'll now take up public comment. Any public comment to begin on the liquor and entertainment board? I don't see any. Let's take up then item number 12, the approval of the minutes. Everybody had a chance to look at the minutes? Motion's in order.
I move to approve the minutes of the Carson City Liquor and Entertainment Board from September 17th, 2015, as presented.
Motion and a couple seconds on the motion discussion. Hearing not all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posse nay carried unanimous. Okay. Let's now take up item 13A. This is potential approval of Raquel Novoa. Did I pronounce that correct? Very good. Okay. Raquel, hold on. We'll have Lena present it here, so.
This item is for possible action to approve Raquel Novoa as the liquor manager for La Enchilada, liquor license number 16-31023, located at 557 South Solomon Road. She is applying for a full liquor license, and staff is recommending approval.
Why don't you tell us a little bit about what you're planning on doing, and if you can, I mean, if you want to, let's put it like that, if you want to.
Yeah, I'm planning, well, this, this little place that I just get, well, I've been 20 years on the business, on the food business, so I just, I just bought this little place right there. There is, like, not a, a lot of people think there is not a good place for business, because there have been so many restaurants right there, but I know I can do it. I want to, I have planned to make like, work with the schools for good, good prices. That way I can help the students, especially to the high schoolers, to have like, good prices on their menu, on their food. I know that if I can do like, like, family, family place there, like selling the beer, or just have like, on my menu with alcohol, I think it's going to help me to go out, because I would like also to plan in doing like donations to the schools, boys and girls, and some other, some other places that I can help, because I've been having, I had a lot of help from children's cabinet when I, when I really needed. So I think it is the time that I can give something back to, to the city, to the people who help me. So that's one of my main points right there. And I think the alcohol is going to help me to go, to raise my, my sales there. Pretty much is something that I really want to do there.
Very good. Are your employees going to go through server training and talk to us about how you're going to prevent sales to minors?
Yeah, I'll be, I'll be at front of all this, but I cannot be there like the, the whole 12 hours that I have, that I'll be open, but I'll be having somebody else taking classes with me to have, to know all the information and all this. And I'm planning also to do this small place, so to do, put cameras and do, pay attention and all that. I have, I got four kids. They've been on this kind of trouble for having alcohol selling to minors. So I think that's my opportunity that I can, I can prove, and I can pay attention and that, like, not to let happen to minors being on this kind of situations.
Very good. More? Brad? Motion, motions in order. I guess, let me see, everybody else, are we okay? Go. I'm sorry.
I have to bring this up, because it's on the report, the three incidents of arrest with the NHP and so forth, and a delinquent account. Is this going to be an ongoing problem, or are these issues going back to 1998 and 2004? Is this something that's in the past and that, because it's on this report? So I'm just curious, what is going on and where are we moving forward? You personally moving forward, have we put this behind us and it's not, won't come up again?
The 1998, I can, what is it?
Well, there's three incidents. One cited for unrestrained dog and keeping a vicious dog.
Oh.
Then a risk of resisting a public officer and obstructing a peace officer, and then cited by Reno Police Department for failure to supervise a child. It's on the report.
Okay. I live on this, I live about the dog. I was, I was living on this house, and I have my dog on the backyard. It just jumped, and that's what happened with the, with the dog. That's what happened with the dog, and I wasn't there. I can hardly, to be honest, I can hardly remember about this, about this incident. The only thing that I can remember is that the dog jumped into the front yard, and it wasn't fence there, and I believe it scared a lady.
Okay. I mean, I think what really caught my eye is obstructing a police officer in 1998. It's on the record here. So this is an incident that happened and it should not come forward when you're in your place of business, correct? Nothing like this would ever take place, right?
Okay. It was, it was somebody, it was a driver with me in the, because I've been 20 years on this with the catering trucks. It was a driver with me. I was, I was a cook, and somebody, somebody else was driving, was driving the truck. And the thing was, they pulled him over, and he started arguing, and I get back into the truck. I didn't came out, and they were telling me to come out, but when they start, the driver start arguing with the, with the police officers, and I stopped into the, I didn't came out, out of the truck, because they were with the guns there. Even they spray, they spray us with, they sprayed me with, with a pepper spray or whatever they, it is. And when I saw the, the sheriffs, they were with the guns out, I was in the truck, and I was scared. I didn't came out.
Thank you. I go back to the sheriff. I mean, I know you're recommending this, but it's on this report. That's why I brought it up, because I think it should be, you know, discussed, that we're not going to...
also to do, this is a small place, so to do, put cameras and do, pay attention and all that. I have, I got four kids, they've been on this kind of trouble for having alcohol selling to minors, so I think that is my opportunity that I can, I can prove and I can pay attention and that, like, not to let happen to minors being on this kind of situations.
Very good. Board, Brad? Motion, motions in order. I guess, let me see, everybody else, are we okay? Go, I'm sorry.
I have to bring this up because it's on the report, the three incidents of arrest with the NHP and so forth, and a delinquent account. Is this going to be an ongoing problem or are these issues going back to 1998 and 2004? Is this something that's in the past and that, because it's on this report? So I'm just curious, what is going on and where are we moving forward? You personally moving forward, have we put this behind us and it's not, won't come up again?
The, the 1998, I can, what is it?
Well, there's three incidents. One cited for unrestrained dog and keeping a vicious dog.
Oh.
Then a risk of resisting a public officer and obstructing a peace officer, and then cited by Reno Police Department for failure to supervise a child. It's on the report.
Okay, I live on this, I live about the dog, I was, I was living on this house and I have my dog on the backyard, it just jumped, and that's what happened with the, with the dog. That's what happened with the dog, and I wasn't there. I can hardly, to be honest, I can hardly remember about this, about this incident. The only thing that I can remember is that the dog jumped into the front yard and it wasn't fenced there, and I believe it scared a lady.
Okay, I mean, I think what really caught my eye is obstructing a police officer in 1998. It's on the record here, so this is an incident that happened and it should not come forward when you're in your place of business, correct? Nothing like this would ever take place, right?
Okay. It was, it was somebody, it was a driver with me in the, because I've been 20 years on this with the catering trucks. It was a driver with me, I was, I was a cook and somebody, somebody else was, was driving, was driving the truck, and the thing was, they pulled him over and he started arguing, and I get back into the truck, I didn't came out, and they were telling me to come out, but when they start, the, the driver start arguing with the, with the police officers, and I stopped into the, I didn't came out, out of the truck because they were with the guns there. Even they spray, they sprayed us with, they sprayed me with, with a pepper spray or whatever they, it is, and when I saw the, the sheriffs they were with the guns out, I was in the truck and I was scared, I didn't came out.
Thank you. I, I go back to the sheriff. I mean, I know you're recommending this, but it's on this report, that's why I brought it up, because I think it should be, you know, discussed, that we're not going to have incidents such as this in the future as we progress having a business within our establishment. I'm going on the recommendation of the sheriff to approve this license. Thank you.
Anybody else? Motion, go ahead, try and motion.
Based on some of the concerns that have been brought forward, I'm going to add a condition to the approval, so I'm going to make a motion to approve Raquel Novoa as the liquor manager for La Enchilada, subject to the condition that the applicant assure that the applicant and all employees serving liquor must complete a server training course acceptable to the sheriff's office pursuant to CCMC 4.13.060, and submit documentation to the Business License Division within 120 days of this approval that such training has been completed. If documentation is not submitted per this condition to the satisfaction of the Business License Division and the sheriff's office, staff shall bring the license back to the liquor board for further consideration.
There's a, there's a motion and a second on the motion discussion. Supervisor, Sheriff.
May I ask the sheriff department, is this a condition for all persons taking out a liquor license, or is this an exception to the rule? Or does everyone have to do what this ordinance may, or what was just read?
I'm going to cede that over to Lena to answer, because she and I have discussed this at length.
Okay.
It does state in the ordinance that all people that receive a liquor license, that they are to attend the alcohol server training along with their staff. It is not a condition that, something that they provide that information to. It's the way the written, the ordinance was written back in 2011 when it was changed and that condition was added. As far as a follow-up, that was not part of a condition that was added at the ordinance at the time that was, you know, wanted by the board.
Is that something we should consider then? For all licenses?
Well, the 120 days as far as attending training, it is required by the ordinance. If the, if the board would like to have verification that they have attended that, that is something that we could review, yes.
I, I think it's worthwhile to put that in for review, that we just don't arbitrarily think they're going to go do it. We need proof that they did do it in all cases. Maybe moving forward, that's something, as Brad motioned here, we could put into every liquor license, if that's a possibility.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Plummel, do you want to?
Lee Plummel, Community Development Director, so business license is under, under community development. So as Lena said, it is, it is a requirement. What's not a, what the addition is, is that they provide proof to us. I think we can bring back, back a discussion. I don't want to come away from here saying we're going to do that on everyone necessarily without having some discussion about the implications of bring, we'll be bringing, of us verifying it for every single liquor license and bringing it back to you if every single person is not, has not had the training. So I think we should have a discussion on that before getting direction that we are going to do that on every liquor license. That's all, that's all I want to say.
No, I only brought it up as a, something to look at in the future. I didn't ask it to come back as an agenda item. I think discussion is worthy, and I'll go along with that premise, but I think it's something that we should incorporate into the business license practice, that we need verification that everyone's going to the school that they're supposed to be going to school. That's all I was asking for. Thank you.
Okay. Do you understand that condition that's on here?
Yes.
In other words, you have to attend with your employees, and you have 120 days, and if not, then we'll be getting a report back as to whether or not there was compliance or not, and maybe subject to further review. Understood?
Yes.
Okay, on the motion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, carried unanimous. Okay, thank you, all right. Go do some good work and, I'll get out there and have an enchilada. All right. Thanks, Raquel.
Thank you.
All right, let's take up item 13B, Guadalupe Rodriguez. Lena, why don't you take us through this?
This, this item is for possible action to approve Maria Guadalupe Rodriguez as the liquor manager for Los Marias Mexican Restaurant, liquor license number 16-31018, located at 1939 North Carson Street. She is applying for a full liquor license, and she's purchasing the restaurant from the previous owner. Staff is recommending approval. I do have Detective Acosta here to help with translation.
Who's, who, who was the previous owner?
That's, it used to be Sylvia.
Who is Sylvia?
Sylvia Hernandez. Ah, the former owner of the restaurant.
How do you know her?
Ah, I know her, I've been knowing her in Reno.
Who is she?
Sonia Hernandez, she's known her for quite a while.
I'm just trying to focus also, where is that location?
Where is her business?
Ah, it's on the 10th.
She doesn't recall the actual address.
Well, it's okay, just tell me the area.
Yes.
Right.
1939 North Carson.
Right. Pete, yeah, okay, all right. Tell us what you, tell us what you plan to do.
What do you plan to do to prevent young people from buying alcohol?
Be sure that she asks for ID to make sure that minors do not buy alcohol.
Let me ask you this. Don't take offense at this, but suppose you have someone who doesn't speak Spanish, comes in, it's underage. How do you deal with that?
If someone enters and you can't communicate with them to identify the person, what will you do for that?
How?
If someone enters and you can't understand why they speak Spanish, he or she speaks Spanish, what will you do for that? To communicate that that person doesn't buy alcohol if they're younger than you?
Definitely, I have to go to school today.
How?
I have to go to school today.
She's got to go to the server training, obviously, to make sure that she understands what she needs to do.
Okay, all right. The recommendation is approval? All right, board? Where are we? Motion, questions in order.
I have a question for staff, Health and Human Services. I don't see anybody here. There was an inspection that noted some violations, I just wanted to see if they were corrected.
She doesn't know?
All right, I'll, I'll ask staff.
Well, I'm a little confused, can, part of this agenda is in Spanish, so can she read English if someone comes in with a driver's license? Are you able to look at a license and determine the age of a person?
She understands a little bit, she may be able to read a little bit. She, she's saying she could understand it. She's just susceptible trouble.
Sorry. She says she could read a little bit, she can obviously understand a little bit, it's just, she needs a little assistance sometimes.
And before she's able to serve liquor, will she be going through the training?
Before she starts selling alcohol?
We'll go right back to the training.
Yes.
So she will be able to serve liquor before the training is completed?
Before she starts selling alcohol?
No, first I'll go to class, then she'll get the permission.
Once she goes to the class and gets, obviously, permission, she'll start selling alcohol.
So we're looking at, she has to complete the trash, the class, and her staff has to complete it before she can serve liquor?
Before she says she can serve?
No. She can serve liquor, I'm looking at the sheriff department.
The way the ordinance states is that they have to attend the server training within 120 days of receiving approval from the board. It does not stipulate that they cannot serve alcohol prior to that.
Your employees, you have to go to class. So you will sell alcohol before you go to class, or wait until you go to class, and then start selling alcohol? What do you plan to do?
Ah, the employees that are already, they have their...
She's got some employees that already have server training.
But I'm the only one that...
She is the only one that does not have it.
You're the owner, will you be there? The license is held in your name and you're the owner, so you'll be there on a regular basis?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Do you go by Maria or Guadalupe?
Is it Maria or Guadalupe?
Maria, Guadalupe.
Her middle name is Guadalupe.
Right, Maria. Okay, so Maria, how many employees do you have?
Two.
Two. Do either of them speak English?
They speak English?
Yes.
Yes.
And do they cover, are they there most of the hours that you're open?
They're there during the hours that you're open.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Public comment, anybody? Board? Motion, motions in orders.
I move to approve Maria Guadalupe Rodriguez as the liquor manager for Los Marias Mexican Restaurant, liquor license 16-31018, located at 1939 North Carson Street.
There's a motion and a second on the motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, carried. Thank you. Thank you, Sal, for doing the work there. Okay. All right, we'll now move to concluding public comment under the Liquor and Entertainment Board. Anybody? I don't see any, then unless there's an objection, we will adjourn as the Liquor and Entertainment Board will reconvene as the Board of Supervisors and will take up item 17 with the sheriff. This is the Office of Criminal Justice Assistance Grant, TriNet Narcotics Task Force, $68,000. Sheriff, you want to tell us what's going on here?
Good morning, Mr. Mayor. For the record, Sheriff Furlo, who, where are we at there? This is a action to approve the acceptance of the Criminal Justice, Office of Criminal Justice Assistance Grant, 15JAG03, TriNet Narcotics Task Force, in the amount of $68,000. It is a good opportunity to inform you that on the, on the narcotics side of the enforcement and over at the sheriff's office, we are running a special enforcement team which targets street drug use, our mid-level distribution level, which is this grant, which is what this grant supports, is our TriNet Narcotics Task Force, as well as supporting some of the more major task forces up in Reno.
Ken, I just have one question. Since Douglas County is a part of this, do they provide any financial assistance match, anything of that nature with regards to this? There was no indication in our paperwork.
No, this is the Carson Cities end.
Okay, just Carson Cities end.
This is Carson City.
Okay.
Is that right, Kathy Heath? All right. It's on the record. That hurt. I'm sorry. I didn't mean to sheriff that way, but that's okay, all right. Public comment? Board, I'm sorry. Jim, did I miss? Go.
Just a couple of quick questions. I'm curious about, on page five, item two, the bulletproof vest mandatory. Is that a policy within the whole department for all sheriffs? I'm just curious.
You're talking about policy to wear vests? That is our policy, yes.
And that's good to know, thank you. Also, I just had a quick question on page six. It says the training is provided free of charge online through the Center of Task Force and so forth. Is the, the person who's in that position now, do they go back for retraining, or is this a new person going for new training?
We normally rotate persons through our TriNet Task Force on a regular basis. The current person in there has been there before and he's just back in it.
Thank you.
Further board comments? Public, anybody? Motion's in order.
I move to accept the Office of Criminal Justice Assistance Grant, 15-JAG03, TriNet Narcotics Task Force, in the amount of $68,000.
Motion and a couple of seconds on the motion discussion. Hearing none on the motion, all in favor, the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, carried unanimous. Thanks. Sheriff, let's take up 17B.
17B is an action to approve, excuse me, an action to accept the Office of Criminal Justice Assistance Grant, 15JAG04, Regional Gang Initiative, in the amount of $135,000. This action, or I should say, this, this team, this is our tri-county team consisting of elements of Douglas County, Carson City, and Lyon County, working jointly together to combat gang activities in the region.
So, good morning.
Hi.
So just in general, I'm noticing, are you seeing all the JAG grants starting to decline in the amounts that we're receiving year over year?
Year over year, as Kenny Furlo says, they should be receiving, they should be pulling back, and yes, they do, these types of grants, they do wean down.
And so, I'm, at some point in time, will there be that we have to start picking it up 100% if we want to continue these services?
At, at some point in time. Some of these grants go much, much longer than you would expect, and, and we can just thank the, the Office of Criminal Justice Assistance for that. Others, they're on a definitive period.
I just want to caution so that when we're putting the future budgets together, that we're actually looking and ensuring if we want to continue some of these positions, that we might need to start looking at funding them.
Kenny, under fiscal impact, it shows that you need an additional $5,000, but can you actually just walk us through how, that's just a timing issue and the entire amount is actually budgeted over two fiscal years?
Sure, appreciate that. These, these grants are offered on a federal cycle, which is in conflict with local, local governments, so as we put our budgets together, we make a best effort to get those projections into you as accurately as possible, but we're not in control of that end result. As a, as a result of this one, that shortcoming, that roughly $5,000 shortcoming, will be budgeted into the FY '17 budget, so it will not create a shortfall this year.
Out of the total grant of the 346, our share is the 135, leaving the 211, and so that's, I'm assuming that's cut halfway between Lyon and Douglas, 105 each? Is that correct? Is there a reason we're, we're paying a higher dollar amount than they are?
I can, I can ask Kathy Heath to come on up and give you a little bit of the fiscal side of it, if you'd like.
Just curious as to why our share is higher than theirs, if I'm looking at that correctly.
Good morning. Our share is actually $48,272. The Douglas County share is $45,978, and the Lyon County share is $40,750. Each of those other two counties present to me their 100% cost, and then I look at our 100% cost, and I try to allocate it out percentage-wise in some, as much of an equal amount as I can.
Thank you.
No, you're welcome.
Other questions from the board? Public comment? Anybody? Sheriff's? Okay. All right, motions in order.
I move to accept the Office of Criminal Justice Assistance Grant, 15-JAG04, Regional Gang Initiative, in the amount of $135,000.
Motion and a couple of seconds on the motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay, carried unanimous. Okay. Let's take up the third one of these. Sheriff, this is the High and Plain Sight?
High and Plain Sight. This is an action to approve the acceptance of Criminal Justice Assistance Grants, 13JAG39I, Dare, High and Plain Sight, in the amount of $4,435. We did provide this training or this program once before. As a result of the popularity, we've been asked to, to present again, and the grant was offered to us, and we would like to accept it.
Board, Jim, Supervisor, Sheriff, go.
Another question, sorry. On page one, it says the training is highly recommended for law enforcement, school personnel, and community leaders. Do school personnel, is that staff from our local schools attend this?
Yes.
And community leaders, is that something that we could attend as board members?
Yes, you can, if you would like.
Okay, and just curious, that the name High and Plain Sight is just ironic, but I mean, I'll leave it at that, it's kind of a pun in some sense.
Questions in order.
Kenny, I don't think any grant under twenty-five thousand dollars needs to come to us. I assume that you brought this to us so that you can put it on the public record about the service that's being provided? Is that correct? And if so, do you want to go into that a little more?
We routinely bring all of our grants over to you folks, not only just so that you're aware, but so that our public's aware of the services that we're providing throughout the community as well. Yes, this is somewhat of a small grant. But it is important that people in the community understand what we are doing and how we're using those federal dollars to supplement some of the training and activities that we are providing here in the town. As Mr. Sherk said, you know, opportunities, somebody may want to jump up and see what those programs are doing.
Any other board members? Public? Motion in order, supervisor about.
I move to accept the Office of Criminal Justice Assistant Grant thirteen dash Jag dash thirty-nine I Dare, a High and Plain Sight, in the amount of four thousand, four hundred and thirty-five dollars.
Motion and a couple of seconds on the motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Carried unanimous, okay. Let's take up finance. This is the condition of each fund. Everybody had a chance to look at what we get every month. Public comment? Motion's in order.
I move to accept the report on the condition of each fund in the Treasury and the statements of receipts and expenditures through October sixth, twenty fifteen, per NRS two five one point zero three zero and NRS three five four point two nine zero.
Motion, second on the motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, carried unanimous. Well done, Nancy.
Should all be that way, huh?
All right. All right, Laura, let's take up the Sierra Electronics.
Good morning.
This is eighteen, nineteen eighty. Okay, go.
Laura Tadman, Purchasing. This is to approve contract one five one six zero four three for maintenance and purchase of Motorola products from Sierra Electronics for a not-to-exceed annual amount of sixty-five thousand dollars for a five-year contract. From the, this will come from the radio maintenance fund and currently there is a balance of sixty-six thousand, five hundred, fifty-eight dollars and ninety-eight cents. Sierra Electronics is the only authorized dealer for Motorola in the area.
Questions in order.
Morning. I noticed on this contract that it actually has a portion that is a set fee of seventeen thousand and sixty dollars for them to be on call twenty-four seven. Can you tell me, in the past, have we spent the whole, is it sixty-five thousand every year, last five-year contract, too?
Sure, James Jacklet, Carson City Public Works Operations Manager. The, this is an extension, this is a renewal, in essence, of services that we've been receiving from Sierra Electronics for the previous five years. And then they have been servicing our radio system for a long time, many, many years. So, this standby service that they're performing is a continuation of exactly what they do. They do perform that immediate standby service. And in the immediate, in the last few years, we've been trying to build up our communications expertise and ability in-house. But there was a period of time where that was completely on Sierra Electronics. They performed all of that for us. They were our maintainer and our standby everything for that. So, now it's a blend, we're trying to build that expertise in-house and, but we still need them, we still rely on them. They're there, they're critical for us, and this ensures that we have that coverage.
So, do you anticipate in the future we might be able to reduce this contract as we get the expertise?
I think it's possible to reduce that amount in the future, assuming that we continue to build our own expertise in-house. So, along with anything, we're trying to maintain what we have, we're trying to look forward to where we're going and develop that picture. And as we've mentioned, there's going to be things that we're going to come back to you here in the next several years. You're going to hear more from us. There's improvements that need to take place, the system has aged, and really, it's a developing animal. In order to completely not rely on any help, we'd have to be pretty staffed up, so I don't really see that happening. There will always be a relationship with them. It's just a matter of how much they actually do for us.
A developing animal, all right. Public comment? Motion's in order, supervisor about.
I move to approve contract number fifteen sixteen dash zero four three for the maintenance and purchase of Motorola products from Sierra Electronics for a not-to-exceed annual cost of sixty-five thousand dollars for a five-year contract.
Motion by supervisor about, second by supervisor Sherk on the motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, carried unanimous, thank you. All right. Laura, let's take up Carson Valley Oil.
Okay, this is to approve amendment number one to contract one five one six zero two one. It's a jointer contract to include the Nevada State Purchasing RFP Contract Number three one two five with Thomas Petroleum for the card lock processing system, which was inadvertently left out previously. This is for the purchase of fuel for the city vehicles. Contract one five one six zero two one was approved for a not-to-exceed amount of a million dollars. This amount included the fuel for city vehicles, therefore, there's no monetary change with this amendment. It's just an oversight.
Okay. Got a couple of questions up here, supervisor Brinkowski, then supervisor Sherk.
Laura, I assume there is no disruption of service?
No.
And there's no contractual issues that we run into by having that gap?
No, it was a board.
I'm just curious, in the package, there's contract number thirty sixty-four included, starting on page eight. Is there a reason that's included?
That's the original contract jointer.
We're basing our change order or our amendment to the contract on contract thirty-one twenty-five.
We're adding thirty-one, yeah.
To thirty-one twenty-five.
We're adding thirty-one twenty-five, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Other board comments? Public comment? Motion's in order, supervisor Brinkowski.
I move to approve amendment number one to contract number fifteen sixteen dash zero two one, jointer contract to include the Nevada State Purchasing Division RFP Contract thirty-one twenty-five with Thomas Petroleum for Card Lock Processing System.
Second.
Motion and a couple of seconds on the motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, carried unanimous. Let's take up, do you need time to set up? All right, let's take up item twenty alpha Canyon Vista.
For the record, Susan Pansky, Planning Manager. This is a request for approval of a final map for the Canyon Vista subdivision. This will create eighteen single-family residential lots in the single-family one-acre zoning district. This project is located at the intersection of Hillview Drive and Clearview Drive, as shown on the aerial I have on the screen. And I have a copy of the map up on the screen for you to take a look at. This is the eighteen lots that will be recorded with this map. The improvements for this subdivision are underway as we speak and I expect they'll be submitting for building permits for their models almost immediately after they get this map recorded. The applicants are here in the audience and staff is recommending approval.
Jim, did you have a question?
I'm sorry.
Okay. Board, anybody? Been through it. Public comment, anybody? Motion's in order.
I move to approve a final subdivision map known as Canyon Vista from Davini, Nevada LLC, resulting in the creation of eighteen residential lots on property zone, single-family one acre, located east of Hillview Drive between Clearview Drive and East Appian Way, APN zero one zero one nine four zero seven and zero eight, which fully complies with all of the conditions of approval as contained in the Canyon Vista tentative subdivision map staff report pursuant to the requirements of the Carson City Municipal Code.
Motion and a couple of seconds on the motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, carried unanimous, okay. Twenty B.
May, I just wanted to, my name is Scott Smith. I'm Scott Smith, I'm the developer for Davini. And I just wanted to thank the staff and the city of Carson City for how pleasant it was to deal with the city. I mean, it's a breath of fresh air. Your staff is incredible. You know, you guys have great rules, it's all spelled out, your staff is there to help, which is something I have not experienced in any other county. And I really want to say thank you very much and you should commend your staff. They do a great job and they're just so helpful and we really, really had a great experience. So, I really thank you very much.
Very good, thank you, Scott. Okay. Thanks for your investment in our community, too. Thanks for your investment in our community.
Pleasure, pleasure.
All right. All right, let's now move to twenty B, Jackson Family Living Trust. This is a planned unit development. Want to take us through that?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This application is for planned unit development on two, about three point three six acre, three point six six acres. It's an infill site on Eagle Station Lane for forty-one lots. But as I mentioned, the project is located on Eagle Station Lane, as shown in the aerial that I have here. This is an infill site that's behind Coles and north of the J.C. Penney Building. This site has had several different renditions of residential development over the last couple of years. The most recent approval is a special use permit for seventy-three apartments. The applicant has a condition of approval with this approval that that special use permit would rescind as a part of the PUD. Site plan showing what the applicant is proposing, again, forty-one units on three point six six acres. The minimum lot size on this project is one point nineteen hundred and twenty-five square feet. The average is about twenty-five hundred square feet. If you're familiar with the Millennium Project off of Molly and Long, this is a very similar format. Actually, the lot sizes are very similar. I believe the minimum is exactly the same as well. The proposed architecture, these are the elevations of the floor plans that the applicant is proposing. There are two two-stories and two three-stories. And the proposed landscape plan, and I'm going to stop here and kind of talk just briefly about some of the requests that the applicant has as a part of this application. In addition to the planned unit development, the applicant is requesting a special use permit for residential use and general commercial and variances for some minimums that they would like to not adhere to. So, initially, residential and a commercial zoning district, they generally, in this case, have to prove that the site is not viable for commercial uses. The applications on this property for probably the last twenty-plus years have indicated this really isn't a good site for commercial. It doesn't have good visibility because of the location of Coles and J.C. Penney's around it. It doesn't have a good arterial location for commercial visibility. And all the applications have generally been for either residential or congregate care facilities on this location. So, we do feel that it is better suited to residential use such as this. Some of the variances that they're asking for, a minimum in lot size in the general commercial zoning district, the minimum lot size is six thousand square feet, that's generally intended for commercial buildings. In the case of the PUD, you're allowed to vary residential lot sizes, and so we feel it's appropriate to grant that variance. Variance in the required parking. A hundred and three spaces are required per the Carson City Standard Code. That would be two spaces for forty-one units for a total of eighty-two spaces for just the residential units. But with a reduced street section of, that would not allow parking on the street, they have to provide an additional one space per two units, so a half a space per unit. And that brings the total to a hundred and three. They're requesting a variance because they have seventy-nine parking spaces total. And that really is because they are not allowed, per our code, to count their driveways in addition to their garages. In most cases, they provide driveways that would allow for cars to be parked in the driveways in addition if they needed to. And staff feels that the reduction that they're requesting, because this is a unique infill site, is appropriate. Reduction in open space, per the PUD ordinance, thirty percent is required. That is generally, staff feels, intended for larger-scale PUDs that have an opportunity for larger open space as opposed to a smaller infill site such as this one. In addition to that, our code does not allow for the counting of rear yards. Only twenty-five percent of the rear yards can be counted, but as you can see on the landscape plan here, all of the shading and what really looks like yellow on the screen is what we would consider open space. So, while their counted allowable open space is only fifteen percent, the total open space, were they able to count everything, is actually forty-nine percent of the site. So, staff feels that that's an appropriate request as well. And then finally, a reduction in the periphery setback. There is, in the PUD ordinance, a requirement for twenty feet adjacent to any other property. Because again, this is a small infill project, we feel that a ten-foot setback is appropriate. In the general commercial zoning district, typically, the setbacks are zero. And the only setback you'd be looking at if you had a commercial building on the site would be the difference between what's required between buildings, essentially. So, staff is recommending approval. And before I turn it over to the applicant, they do have a video that they wanted me to show. So, I'm going to pull that up for you really quick. And then we'll be done. So, this is a fly-around of what the village will look like at completion. This is the entrance, they're proposing landscaping entries at the entry and a block wall around the project that has decorative iron fencing around it. Also, at the front, adjacent to the Eagle Station Lane, they're proposing that the rear of the houses also have architecture as opposed to just having the straight stucco or siding along the back. And that's intended to really take advantage of the four-sided architecture so that as people are driving into the community or driving by it, they're not looking at what is very obviously the backside of houses. And then as we come around, you can see the various open space areas. This is the detention basin and some guest parking. And then this is, looking in from the north side, you can see all of the residences that are three stories high are located on the interior, all the two stories are located on the exterior. And then some more guest parking in a pocket park. And then back around to the front. Planning Commission recommended approval to you by a vote of seven zero. And the applicant is here to answer any questions, thank you.
Just a question before Don comes up. If there are two cars parked going different ways on the street, can the emergency vehicle still get through?
Cars aren't allowed to be parked on the street because of the reduced section. And that's actually a condition of approval engineering put into the approval.
Very good, all right. Go.
And they have two questions. There are two conflicts between the CCNRs and the plan that was submitted for the tentative map approval. One is in the minimum footprint of the houses. The CCNRs prohibit any floor plans less than two thousand, thirty square feet, but two of the floor plans are smaller than that. The second is in the exterior finish. The CCNRs say only stucco is allowed, but the tentative plan, tentative map plan shows siding. So, I just wanted to know how that conflict is going to be resolved? Are you going to change the CCNRs or which is correct?
For the record, my name is Don Smith with Project One. First of all, let me thank you for reading those, because apparently I didn't read them as carefully as you did. We've already spoken to the people that drafted those for us, that will be taking care of the homeowners association. And both of those have been corrected, as well as some typos that we had referencing Douglas County instead of Carson City, which I thought we got most of those, but thank you for looking at them. And we, those are drafts, CCNRs that we submitted. We knew that there would be some revisions required per the entitlement process, so we'll make sure those are taken care of.
So, there will be siding as well as stucco?
Yes, there will be, yes.
Thank you.
I have a question, the detention basin caught my eye. So, my concern is water flow through that area and is the landscape going to take in some sort of low-impact design scenario where it does capture water when we do have heavy rains and things of that nature?
For the record, Chris Baker, Manhard Consulting, here on behalf of the applicant. If you guys recall, we actually modeled that basin after the Shoals Ranch Basin. So, what's going to happen is that's going to be kind of a revegetated seed blend on the bottom of the basin. There's actually no real permanent landscaping, so it is a detention basin, not really a open space amenity, per se. And then obviously, there's going to be a drainage back to the north capturing the overflow.
And the landscaping itself within the development in the front, will that take on any sort of a low-impact design format or not?
Sandra Wendell is our landscape architect on this, and we will be using all low-impact, all drip irrigation throughout the front. We will permit some turf area in the rear, not on the sides, but in the rear.
Other questions, the board? If you can tell me, what is your ask? If you can tell me, what is your estimate of the entry value of these homes when they get built?
That's asked a lot. I want to be clear about one thing. These are not low-income. This is not our intent. As far as the price points, we won't know for probably a few more months what we're going to do. As you know, that the market's going to change drastically, and it's not that we want to maximize, it's just that we're going to be impacted by the cost of materials and subcontract labor that will be required. So to place prices today, it would be, you know, it's a guess.
That's fair enough.
And so it's tough, next year's going to be a tough year. Would you agree?
No comment.
That's a good answer, Don. Okay. Yeah, anybody else? Public comment? Be ready, board. Supervisor Abell, go.
I move to approve TPUD-15-069, a tentative planned unit development consisting of 41 single-family detached residential lots, including approval of a special use permit to allow residential use on property zone general commercial and variances to allow reduction in the minimum lot size, reduction of the required parking, reduction of the required open space, and reduction of the required periphery setback on property located at 250 Eagle Station Lane, APN 009-123-28 and -39, based on the findings and subject to the recommended conditions of approval in the staff report.
Motion and a couple of seconds on the motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposing aye, carried unanimous. Don, did you want to?
I just have one more comment. You know, and I wish that, in this process, that we would have had a little bit more help from staff. We could have gotten through this a little quicker. I just didn't want to sound like the guy before me. I do a lot of work in northern Nevada. I live here in Carson, long time in One Amok, Nevada, and I, too, want to thank staff. You read the variances that we requested. You looked at the process that we were undertaking to put 11 units on, I mean, 11 units per acre on that site. We really couldn't have done it if we hadn't had Mr. Plummel's help and Ms. Pansky's help and the rest of staff. It was, I think it was a complex thing, and I'm really happy, and I think we're going to bring a really nice project to Carson City. So thank you very much.
And thank you, Don, and thank for the investment in our community. Thank you. We'll have a talk with the staff about being more responsive.
Yeah, there you go.
They're going to have a talk with us about a raise, but that's not...
Yeah.
All right, all right.
More staff.
More staff.
More staff, yeah, let's get real.
All right. We'll just go to item number 21. Go.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor. Members of the board. Eric Von Schimmelmann, Chief Information Officer. The board actually presented, actually was for me, just to present two items that we're working on for you in conjunction with your goals and objectives for the strategic plan for the city. These are for open and transparent government. I've been asked to kind of reduce that, so I'm only going to present one of the items today, just to give you a quick glimpse into what we've been working on here. The item that I want to present is our open budget and open expenditures. This will give the citizens visibility into our revenue, budget, and expenditures in near-real time. We're looking at the timing of uploading the data here. So what we have here is a website we've been working on, and this is for our open budget. And I just wanted to go through how this would be managed and how you would work your way through the actual site, and you can see where we can go with this. So, let's just try to do first. So, when you go into the site, this is our open budget. Down here at the bottom, there's a window that shows our expenditure budget, $173 million currently. We can drill down into any of our budget items. It's broken down by fund currently, and you can drill down. If you hover over any of these line items, it'll show you what was approved for general fund or whatever fund balance you're looking at and what the current expenditures are. Out of that, you can drill down in and look at various department levels. Let's see, where are we going to go here? So the one that I know of for sure is administrative services. If you drill down in, you can go into general government. And it shows out the salaries and everything for general government here. Let's see, go back to administrative services. So you can also flip back over and see how items are funded, where they come out of. Sorry. So, let's see, what else do I have on the open budget?
Is it searchable? I think we asked that question before.
Yes. Yes, you can search up in the top corner. You can search for...
So the box at the top is a search for the...
It's within the site, yes.
Okay, within the site, all right, thank you.
Yes, you can search within the site, and you can just start typing, and it'll hold...
So can you tell us how much we spend on donuts?
Let's see, donuts, yes. It's close, so...
Go to expenditure.
Yeah, so this is the open budget. So the second part of this is our open expenditure site, and this is the one that I like a lot more. You can actually see live what we have spent money on and exactly who we've spent it to. So on the site, it gives our overall expenditures. It also gives you a couple boxes here showing the top departments, top vendors, top expense category, where we sit today. The one thing I noticed on this one, which was a little odd to me, was Parks and Recreation here was top. So not intuitively knowing what this is, you can actually drill down, go into the charts of it, and keep drilling down through Parks and Recreation. And what you'll see is through Culture and Recreation, Parks Capital, their payment to Miles Construction. This all ties back into the MAC. So if you go back to the beginning, you're going to see all three of the top items here are actually tied to the MAC. So the top department is Parks, top vendor is Miles, Capital Projects. So the one thing I wanted to show you about Miles, what you can do is you can drill into Miles Construction, look at what we paid to them. We can actually take this scroll bar down here and change the date ranges as we look at this. Also, from here, you can click right here. This is the actual checkbook. It'll take you to any checks that have been written to Miles Construction, when these were written, and for what amount, what accounts they came out of. So, let's see, go back to this. Within here, you can actually search for any vendor, so...
Eric, who implements all the data? Is this Nancy, or is this...
So, yes, it comes directly out of GMBA. We pull it out of our GMBA financials and upload it. Right now, we're working, I think we're going to do it about once a week.
If I could just provide the plain English to that. It reads directly the data that finance inputs, and it just puts a graphic display of it all.
Right.
So there's no additional work in order to display all this?
No. So, this current project is about 90% complete. We're going through some validation on all the data, just to verify, and a few modifications to the website. I'm looking to have this project up and completed and online in about a month. So, through here, I wanted to show one other item. If you go through all of our expending, again, you can go through, these are the divisions, go through, find administrative services and information technology. So I went to our department, because I know this the best. This shows everything that we spent. The other thing it does on the left-hand side, it'll show a breakdown of what the department spent and the percentage of expenditures here and where we sit within our budget. Again, you can flip back to the checkbook, and you can see anything that information technology has spent and who it's gone to right from here. So, checkbook, let's see. The other item I wanted to show, on top of this, I don't know if there's any questions about the budget or open expenditures, if you wanted to say anything. I've got one other item I can show. This is for future, working with our vendor. They are actually looking to do a complete open data portal for everything within the city. They've designed this website generically for us, but we can go right to one page, find our budget, find our expenditures. We're actually looking at product for our performance measures and even a link into our Carson City Connect and anything else we want to put up here.
You know, I'd like to commend the city manager and staff. I assume that this is a result of your Kaizen events, so thanks for bringing us into the 21st century.
Thank you. Honestly, if it was not for the IT department, especially Eric, we wouldn't be here. I mean, he did, in a very short period of time, less than a month, he's gotten this site up, and we're close to going live with it. We could probably give all the board members login credentials right now, and then, once we're ready to go live, it's just, no one needs to log in. It'll be out there. It's all publicly accessible and publicly searchable information.
And it's real-time?
Real-time.
Do any part of the existing one have the balance sheet information, like liabilities and coverage ratios and stuff like that?
Debt.
Debt?
Debt, debt schedules and that stuff.
Well, we have the... I'm not sure if I understand the question. The debt payments are in there? Do you, would you...
No, I was just thinking that if there's something on, for me, it means coverage ratios. I mean, just to make sure that we're all meeting all of our bond indentures. I don't know if that's...
I can look into that.
Okay. Okay. Anybody else? Public comment, anybody?
Well done. Thank you. And I think it also meets one of the city manager's goals that we established was to begin the better public information for budgeting. So I think it will allow the public the ability to see things where we've been so they can help participate in the upcoming budget process. So, well done. I think that fits within the overall goals that we have, too.
Yeah, as I told you the other day, it's good to stay ahead of the power curve. You're on the right side of that one. Okay, all right. Anything else? Let's conclude this item. Thanks, Eric, very much. Okay, go back to work. All right, all right. Let's take up the last item on the agenda, and that is...
What have you done for us lately?
Yeah, what have you done for us lately? Ratification of bills. Have you had a chance to look at the bills? We may see all these on electronically pretty quick here. All right, Supervisor Bagwell, go.
I move to ratify the approval of bills and other requests for payments by the city manager for the period of September 8th, 2015, through October 5th, 2015.
Motion and second on the motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposing aye, carried unanimous. Okay, let's take up 23. Board supervisors, non-action items, anything on any of these items. Supervisor Short, go.
Just a brief update. I've been in meetings with city staff and the noise and the RV ordinances, and it was discussed at the last board meeting, or at that meeting, that it would come to the board for discussing purposes, input, and for the public to allow input from the public, and then it would come back to the board as an agenda item on these ordinances as directed by public input. And speaking of public input, in the newspaper today, a well-written article, there is a meeting on Tuesday for the transportation. It's going to be held in the Bonanza Room for seeking public input on the survey of the regional transportation plan. You know, if it's in the Bonanza Room, I do not believe it can be televised. I think that's something that would be beneficial for the public to have access to. Also, this survey could be put on the website and on hashtag Carson Proud as well. On the hashtag Carson Proud, I think personally, myself, this is something that, just as our IT department has come a long way in the 30 days, I think Carson, hashtag Carson Proud is something that could be expedited in a more beneficial benefit to the community as, just as we move the animal shelter and the building department to outside sources. I think Carson, hashtag Proud, they're still just cutting and pasting from other news sources. I'm against that. I just don't think it's a good idea. Also, when the unfortunate event of Carl Howell happened, the email that we received, maybe there's something we could look at for protocol and procedures of notice of magnitude of this degree when something happens in our community. The notice that went out first came from the Sheriff's Department. We received it on second notice. Maybe there could be a protocol if there's an emergency of who gets notices of these emergencies and events that really affect our community. We got forwarded an email from our city manager, which I greatly appreciate, but in the early release from the Sheriff's Department, there was names in there, but no elected official other than the mayor. I think that should be something, a protocol we could set in motion of in a time of crisis, how everyone gets noticed of these. Just food for thought. Also, the Charter Review Committee is still lacking appointments from our legislature, and for this reason, maybe someone should look at this and take action so we don't have this. It's been going on for a year and a half now, and we still do not have these appointments. It's something that needs to be looked at. Thank you for your time.
I did speak to Ben Kiekefer, and I believe he has made an appointment.
Anybody else got any updates? I don't see any. We're ready, we'll go to, then we'll leave item 23. We'll move to 24, concluding public comment. Anybody on concluding public comment? I don't see any. Are we ready to adjourn? Unless there's an objection or adjourned.